We haven't been able to, so.
Can I turn it back?
We're okay with that, you know. In this case.
Is that a risk?
Right. Good. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I am going to wait for just a moment. I think they're looking to load the other presentation.
Yeah, Bob asked to turn completely around. He's right in the middle.
But to begin with, I'm here this morning to talk a little bit about the recommended fiscal year 2014 utility rates. And as you recall, in January, we had an opportunity to meet with you a little bit early in the budget process to give you some updates, and we talked a bit about utility rates at that time. Tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about the factors that are influencing the rates, some of our rate planning objectives, and the utility operating environment. And then, of course, I'll discuss with you the FY14 recommended rate adjustments. So when we talk about some of the factors that are influencing our rates, first and foremost, our rates are expected to cover the ongoing operations and maintenance requirements of our utility systems. Additionally, we're bound by a number of regulatory requirements to ensure the quality and safety of our systems. And as I mentioned the other evening, we know that there's an increase coming in the purchase of water supply as we move forward, and this is a fairly significant cost driver for our water fund and our wastewater fund, and therefore is a bigger factor in our rate planning over the next few years as we look forward. And as always, we want to make sure that we are operating in a financially responsible manner and in compliance with our approved financial policies. In developing a rate structure, it's important to keep these objectives we have here in mind: our ongoing revenue stream, we want to recover the operational and capital costs, and we want to set rates with more of a long-term perspective. We want to develop a structure in a way that promotes equity among our various user classes and encourages water conservation and environmental stewardship. And most importantly, we want to minimize the impact to our customers. And one way we do that is to recommend adjustments in a very thoughtful and incremental manner. So talking a little bit about our utility environment, like many other areas in the city, we have worked very hard in our utilities departments to contain costs, and we were faced in those areas with the same challenges that we had, that other departments had during the downturn, despite continued demand needed in those areas. But in response to some of those cost containment efforts, the utilities department did a few things. One was that they made about a 15 percent reduction in their overall water and wastewater utility operations budgets from 2009. They also made a pretty significant reduction in their full-time equivalents, reducing 19 percent of their authorized position, and that was all during a time where we continued to see an increase in our customer base. And this speaks a little bit to the ability for them to continue to be productive and be efficient in the way that they bring forward their.
Let me just add something there, particularly for the two new council members who've joined recently. In essence, what these last two charts illustrate is how the utility operations, even though they were funded by utility rates and not general funds, the utilities went through the same type of cost restructuring and efficiency changes that the rest of the organization did. So that helped us keep rates down as we improved our cost effectiveness and overall efficiency in these departments.
You're talking about increase in customers, but that means that we have more payments, right? Isn't that?
Yes, those are increases in customer accounts.
That's on the revenue side, then?
Yes, there would be some.
It's not revenue, but charges, yeah.
But again, their consumption can vary from year to year as well. So whether that generates, you know, it's not one-to-one, I guess, is the point there.
No, but it will tend toward more.
The other item that we did last year was that we were able to refinance and consolidate a number of our bond issues at a lower interest rate to reduce our ongoing debt costs by about $200,000 a year. That was, that obviously helped in some of our cost containment efforts for our utility And while we aim to continue managing the operations in the most efficient way, there are some cost increases that we do need to plan for in our rate planning forecasts. And these issues, excuse me, these increases are largely driven by demand and include general increases like materials and supplies, electricity, chemicals, those things. And just like we discussed on Wednesday evening about with the capital program, we do incorporate the operating costs from capital projects into our long-range plan. And as we mentioned, we have also incorporated what we talked about the other evening, some of the CAP water rate increases into our forecast. So that brings us to where we are today. Just as a side note, last year, council directed staff to use a phased, a two-year phasing approach for the reclaimed water rate increase. Last year, we implemented on July 1st the first 10 cents. We'll be implementing the second 10 cents beginning July 1st of this year. And you've seen this before. When we look back historically, how we've adjusted rates, the first you see from 2009 to 2011, we did not have any rate increases. That created what we might call a little bit of pressure on the system in order for us to do a little bit of catch-up on adjustments. And so in 2012, we did a 4.6 percent rate adjustment, and in 2013, last year, we did a 3.2 percent rate adjustment. We did, we were able to bring that to a net zero cost to our customers, to our typical residential customers, with the 13 percent rate decrease in residential solid waste. Going forward, we would recommend rates that basically smooth out over the next five years, meaning we want to set rates that are, that smooth kind of the increases that are going to be required and are based upon really mostly just increases in costs, in inflationary costs, and again, some of those items that I talked about, the cap water rate increases and items like that. These increases would add approximately, or about 96 cents to an average customer bill. And you can see here, the breakdown, the water rate is 1.7 percent, the wastewater rate at 1.2, with a combined water, combined rate of 1.5. There's about 65 cents of that is water, and 31 cents is wastewater. But if you add in the solid waste bill, our total utility bill would be increased by about 1.3 percent. Again, 96 cents.
Can you go back to that?
Yes.
But you're not taking anything off of solid waste at this point?
At this point, we are not recommending any changes to the solid waste rate. We did a 13 percent decrease last year, and we believe that where we, where, in doing that, that accounted for, obviously, the residential program coming online and how that impacted it, and we think that, that we do not need to make any other adjustments to the solid waste rate.
But the total utility bill is less than the combined water wastewater?
Yes. The majority of residents are served by water, the city's water, wastewater, and solid waste, and they all come in one utility bill. And if you let me, right here, I can show you, this is kind of where we stand in relative position to a number of our neighboring jurisdictions as far as total bill, including solid waste. So you can see on here, we show an average, you know, residential customer, what that, what their monthly cost is on their utility bill in total, all three of those services. One of the things that we do each year is that we come to council on Tuesday night. Council adopted the notice of intention, which basically means that we've put the rate report on file with the city clerk's office and noticed that we are considering rate increases for the fiscal year 2014 budget. We also will hold a public hearing on May 21st, when council is reviewing the tentative budget, and then we would implement new rates effective July 1st. And with that, we're available to answer questions.
Yeah. Yeah, I would like to see no increase this year in water wastewater. And I guess your, moment, my first question was, can we do a solid waste offset like last year? And can you tell me why we can't, a little bit in more detail? As one of the ways to have that overall bill zero.
Councilor Ames, your question was, is there an opportunity to reduce solid waste to offset those costs? And there is not. One of the things that we did last year, we were very aggressive, we looked comprehensively, we looked ahead on the solid waste rates. It wasn't just a one-year downturn. We reduced it substantially. We went from a $15 bill to a $13 bill in round numbers. 13 percent decrease in those rates. Last year, we had some very good pricing for recyclable materials in the range of $50 per ton that we're being paid for that. This year, that, those revenues are more like $32 to $35 a ton. We're still at a sustainable rate with the rate, with the, with the customer rates that we have, but you're going to see that volatility in the, in the rates with respect to what we get for recyclables.
Right.
In addition, our costs for, for tipping fees are going up incrementally, not dramatically. But I don't see an opportunity to reduce the solid waste bill to offset these costs.
How about the total amount of recyclables? Is that increasing?
The recyclable rate right now.
If you sell more and they're paying a little less, it can still come back.
The volume is pretty much the same.
Volume, yeah. Okay. No, that, and the other way we cut rates last time was to look at the slope of the bond coverage curve. How fast is that going up? Can we make that slope less to try to save some money this year?
Last year, Councilor, I spent a lot of time talking with the city council about that financial metric that we rating agencies look at called the debt service coverage ratio. And over the previous couple of years, that was headed in the wrong direction, and I was concerned about the rating agency's perception of that. So last year, when I talked to you, that was a major concern of mine. My professional opinion was that the council should take that into account in considering your utility rate increases. The action that the council took last year largely addressed that problem. It is headed in the right direction. The rate increase before you this year is not being driven by the debt service coverage ratio as it was last year. The rate increases are not specifically for that issue like they, much of it was last year. There are other issues driving rates this year that Katie talked about, including just inflationary pressures on operating costs. If rates increase, the revenues increase. If Bill doesn't increase his operating expenses to that extent, which he's not planning to do, there is an ancillary benefit to the debt service coverage ratio that we'll see over the next few years. But again, that is not the factor that's directly involved in our recommended rate adjustment before you this, for next year.
Yeah, but last, last year, you had the slope going up quite steeply, and you made it less steep, and that satisfied the rating agencies. In fact, we had a, one of our ratings was increased, right, last year? Bond ratings?
The ratings were not increased.
Not the rates, I mean, excuse me, the rating, the bond rating.
The negative watch that Fitch Ratings had placed on the utility was removed last year. The bond rating remained the same. Rating agencies, we're very pleased to see the council's action last year in terms of the water and wastewater rate adjustments. They do like to see the smaller, more modest incremental adjustments each year rather than what we did a few years ago and going two or three years with no rate adjustment at all. So I think the rate, the modest increase that's before you would be acceptable to the rating agencies. Again, it addresses some operational concerns, and a side benefit, not the driving force, is the continued uptick in that debt service coverage ratio.
Okay, but I guess you're not quite answering my question, because you do have the line going up, right? Coverage ratio. If you had it going up less steep, wouldn't that save us some money? Still going up.
Yes, sir, it approaches two. Again, that's not the factor that's driving our recommended increase. If the council chose not to do a rate increase, then that slope would lessen.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. But in our opinion, the rate increase is necessary to address other issues.
But the rate increase would be less if the slope wasn't quite as steep, and I don't think that would harm us at all in terms of.
Conversely, I think the slope would be less if the rate increase was less. Not, the rate increase, we're not suggesting should be less in order to lower the slope. A side benefit, if you will, if the council chooses not to implement the recommended rate increase before you, the slope of that line will be more flat than it is if you do implement the rate increase.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, it would. It would offset. I'll wait a while.
So my understanding is the rate increase is for operational costs? The increased costs of water, the increased cost of chemicals, and the increased cost of maintenance on our system? Is that correct?
Counselor Carlott.
Can you talk more about that?
Yes, the bottom line is, our costs are increasing. You know, all of the things that we've done to economize, to reduce our energy demand, to reduce our staffing, you know, we've capitalized on those. We reduced our energy costs on an ongoing basis for water by over $300,000 a year through our efforts. We reduced our operating costs in energy, in wastewater, by over $600,000 on an ongoing basis. Again, reducing staff. So we've done what we can, but now we've got costs that we don't control. And among those are rising costs for the raw water, in this case, CAP water. Those things are out of our control, and those are the things that are driving this rate. And the other thing that we need to keep in mind, that is, if we were not to adopt a rate increase, what it does is, as you saw in that previous chart, it compounds as we go into the future. So if you don't adopt a rate increase, then the next time, it would be, you know, a compounding, compounding factor. So you're deferring what is necessary to keep this a healthy utility.
So if you continue to kick the can down the road, at some point, you have a sticker shot.
And this is what we saw. When we went through three years without rate increases, we ended up with a, an over 4 percent rate increase in one year.
And just for the benefit of people who might be watching this, can you talk about an enterprise fund and how, you know, this, these things stay in here and they're not part of general fund or, or all of the monies that are in other pools within the city? Explain what a general, or what a enterprise fund is and how that works.
Yes, ma'am. Enterprise fund, the concept is the rates and charges that generate the revenues in that fund would pay for the costs of providing those services, in this case, the utility services, water, wastewater, and residential solid waste. So those revenues are set at a level that are designed to cover the operating costs, the maintenance of the capital infrastructure, perhaps contribute to new capital in terms of either cash contributions or debt financing of, to be able to construct necessary capital improvements, and to maintain the financial health of the system in terms of adequate fund balance, as we said before, certain financial metrics. The city of Peoria does not transfer or subsidize those utility operations from outside funds, such as the general fund, other types of funds. Likewise, those utility funds do not generate any sort of profit that is then transferred out of those utility funds to support general fund operations or operations in other areas of the city. So we want those to be self-supporting systems, if you will, where the revenues are set at a level that covers the costs of those systems.
Mr. Ames?
Yeah, you made the point that it's going to compound, and you made that same point last year, but it hasn't compounded like you suggested last year. What, the original suggested rate last year, we brought it down from?
Last year, we were projecting 3.1 percent in this fiscal year, and 2.6 in the following fiscal year, and then no rate increase in year 16. What we're recommending here is a 1.5 percent for.
Yeah, what did you recommend for 13 originally?
I'm sorry, for 13? Oh, the original?
Yeah.
Was it this one? No, it wasn't.
3.2.
No, what was it before?
It was like 5 or something, wasn't it?
I don't have that right in front of me.
Yeah, it was over 5, I believe.
No, last year, before we did the three, before we got to 3.2.
And then I heard the same thing. Wow, it's really going to compound, but now I see, you know, like a 1 and 1/2 percent, so. I suspect.
I know what you're asking. I don't recall the exact amount. When we started, we had a lot of scenarios we reviewed last year.
Right, and we cut that certain percentage, lowered, lowered a certain amount because of the solid waste. But we also did because we, we made the steep of the bond curve less, and then we also had some savings from capital savings, right, and turn engineering suggested last year.
I think, if I could just jump in, I think it's important, and the staff talked about this quite a bit, that each year, we update a forecast, and, but we only bring to council, actually, the recommendation for rates for that particular year. And with any forecast, we see that in many of our forecasts, things change over the last 12 months. So there were some changes in terms of account growth. There were changes in terms of water consumption used in the average water consumed by an account. There may have been some changes in operating costs. As Katie mentioned, there were changes in our debt service assumption in terms of what our mortgage payment would be, if you will. And that actually was reduced because we were able to work with the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority to refinance some debt. So in that, in each, each time we come back to you, then the projection will, I'll just say, will change. Sometimes it'll go up. Fortunately, this year, it actually decreased. But we only bring to you the first year of a forecast, and we would be back again with next year's budget with updated numbers. And it's likely that the 1.3 percent you see for fiscal year 2015 will not be exactly 1.3 percent next year.
Yeah, you're kind of making my point. You know, to say it's going to compound and really increase like you did last year, it didn't happen, and in part because we're getting more usage and more account holders, and that was one of the main reasons why you were so high. Last time, you were projecting that that was going to stay flat. It hasn't, as we come out of the recovery. We see people are, you know, more people are in homes and, and apparently using somewhat more water, so, and I think that's going to increase. I would like to keep the rate at zero this year, and we're doing that study in, in 14, is it? We're actually doing the study, we.
Are you referring to the study that's in the capital program?
Yeah.
That's actually a study on impact fees. That's, that's not about the operating, that's not a rate study. That is a impact fee study. So that is not related to setting rates.
But it's in the, it's in the water wastewater budget?
It's in the water and wastewater budget. It's one of the many capital projects that are funded through impact fees. It's funded through impact fees, and it's an impact fee study. So there's no rate implications to that.
You're not doing rate there, okay.
That particular project.
Okay. But regardless, I would like to keep it at zero, and then we can see next year if indeed what, if we're trending in the way I see us trending right now from last year, really having more income coming in.
Bill, just a couple of questions. You have, in the past, reduced staffed in, or operational costs. The cost of chemicals and water treatment is obviously, and supplies are going up. Is there any potential risk factor to our citizens if we don't approve a budget increase?
Counselor Patena, it gets back to, when we go to that one graph where we show approximately 1 and 1/2 percent increase on an ongoing basis. The, it would not, there's not a gloom and doom scenario out there on the short term. But on the long term, what we, what we've attempted to do is to adopt a program that minimizes rate shock by smoothing that curve and going out into the future where you have increases that are actually less than the rate of inflation. And so, again, to say that if we didn't get this rate increase this year, that there were bad things would happen, I can't say that. I wouldn't say that. But what I'm looking forward to is the future, what it takes to continue to operate the system, keep it in good, good order, and to be able to take care of those things that we need in the future to increase our treatment capacity and to continue to rehab and rehabilitate our facilities.
Maybe, Mr. Patena, let me add just a little bit to that, if, with mayor and council's indulgence, just a little bit. If you can go back to the last slide that shows the, the increase over the last couple of years.
It's the next slide.
Next slide, last slide, whichever slide, please.
Just back there.
As Bill and Brent have mentioned, Councilmember Patena, we're really attempting to spread or smooth the increases over time. And not only is that sensible from an enterprise utility management standpoint, but it's also, I think, beneficial for our ratepayers that they can anticipate the marginal increases in costs that we're seeing over their household budgets. If you look back to 2009, what we did there, and that was, of course, essentially when the economy was in freefall, and the discussion that we had with the council at that time, and the staff and council fully concurred with this strategy, was to forestall the necessary increases that they were seeing in the utility so that we could really be sensitive to the, to the plight of our citizens in that serious economic downturn. The negative consequence of that strategy, though, was to push those increases out in time, so that when we hit the fiscal '12 budget, we had basically a, a need for the foregone increases that we did not take over those three years, that we really then were required to take for the health of the fund and the, and the health of the operation of the utilities. So what, had the, had the economy not been in that freefall in 2009, I would have been recommending the smoothing type approach going forward. I believe that's a sensible approach, both from a financial management standpoint for our, for our utility funds, but also, I think, for our citizens in terms of their, their planning. It, it's predictable. Now, as Brent said, it will go up and down, and obviously, we're always trying to keep it as low as possible. And we're going to continue to do that aggressively over time. But just to provide a little context for you and Councilmember Edwards, who weren't kind of living through that from the council day, is that was what we, we were doing.
And in terms of the compounding, you can see it there. You can kick the can down the road and get nothing. Within a couple of years, you're going to have to do it all at once. Now, the question is, do you want to blap everybody big time, all at once, and then give them two years off and then hit them hard again? Or did you want to keep it smooth and steady? I'd rather have an increase of a dollar a year than have nothing for the next two years and then hit me with a $3 increase. To me, it just makes sense.
Yeah, I think this is, my prediction would be that we're smoothing it here, and we would have, it would have been considerably higher if we'd worked with last year's forecasting. And I think the key thing is that as the city grows, more households, there's a real economy of scale there, and increased water usage, I think we're going to, we're going to see it drop even below that zero point. And then, but what we're doing right now is if we. increase, that, that stays there in perpetuity, and there may not be a need for that increase.
Well, I have no doubt about your crystal ball, Mr. Ames, you know, in terms of increases and savings because we get the volume. But if you're wrong, you're looking at the big blap again. And the reason that in 13, that there was no increase, is because this council violated the principles of sound financial management, took money out of the general fund and put it into enterprise fund. And that's what happened to Glendale. Now, if you want to do that, that's a different issue.
Yeah, I have a question about the increased volume of customers. If one of our issues is the increased cost to buy water to sell to our customers, that would mean if we don't raise these rates, the more water we buy for these increased customers, the more we will get in the hole. Is that correct?
Yes, counselor. The, the reality is if you are selling more water, in effect, you're buying more water. You're, you're needing more electricity to, to treat that water and to move that water, both on, both when you're talking drinking water and wastewater. So, those, there are increased costs there. Certainly, with respect to having fixed capital for the facilities that we have, you know, that, that cost, there is, there are economies of scale certainly to be in.
And fixed staff.
But, but you do have those, those other costs that are proportional to demand.
And those are what's driving our increases?
That and overall operational cost increase. The cost to do things costs more now than it did previously.
Thank you.
And it's going to cost more. I mean, securing the water from the Central Arizona Project, bringing our supply in is going to cost us more. We don't know right now how much more that's going to cost. And it goes back to the Environmental Protection Agency. They're putting extraordinary constraints on the Navajo Generating Station. Now, we are, CAP is the largest power user in the state of Arizona. They use more electricity in one day than 140,000 homes use in a year. Now, they take water out of the Colorado River at 3,000 cubic feet per second. One cubic foot is seven and a half gallons. One gallon weighs eight pounds. Now, if they shut down EPA and the Central Arizona Project, I mean, NGS, the Navajo Generating Station, and Central Arizona Project has to go out on the open market to buy power, your water rate is really going to go up. I think you're underestimating. I hope you're not. So, by, the idea of not doing this now is foolish. The expenses are going to go up. In addition to possibly shutting NGS down, they're renegotiating the property lease with Navajo, and they're re, and these, the five power companies that operate NGS are renegotiating the lease for the land that NGS sits on with Navajo, and they're also renegotiating the new contract with Peabody Coal. It's not, it's going to become expensive, even if they don't shut NGS down. So, to, to, to pass on keeping it as flat as we can is foolish, because I think there's going to be a big bump somewhere in the future, regardless of what we do. So, questions, comments? The recommendation is 96 cents?
That is correct. 96 cents.
We'll try for consensus. No?
No.
I have one question.
Sure.
I've, I think I ask this every year. What are we doing about people who's taking off and leaving us with the bill? How much money is owed to the city that we're turning around and paying, have our constituents paying more money just to make up for people who left? How much money are we owed? How they do, they owe us? And how are we getting the money back?
Most people that owe us money pay relatively quickly, or else we'll disconnect their water service, and that's not, they, that's not an acceptable situation for them. There are people who leave the home or move out of the city. We typically have deposits that are intended to cover the balance of the bill that they owe. If they owe us more than we have on deposit, then we pursue collection activities against those parties.
How much money is owed to us? Any idea?
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
How much money are we collecting?
We're collecting almost everything that we bill. Again, again, because of the effectiveness of our collection method of shutting the service off if they don't pay the bill.
I'd like to know how much money is owed to us.
We can get that for you.
Okay.
Okay. No rate increase.
The remaining item we have is budget wrap-up. Should we move right into that, Mayor and Council?
Please.
Okay, good. Give us a second to change out some of the folks here and move to the next item.
I'll go ahead and get started. We have a couple of items as far as the council requests that came in through the budget process and some follow-up items. So, we've broken them down into basically two areas, so you're aware, as future items or as items that we need to get a decision on today to bring back for you for your tentative budget. First, was just going to let you know that the future items that we had heard during your budget process were items related to bringing back a discussion on the health clinic, a future discussion on the park ranger program, a future discussion related to the solid waste program, and potentially look at trying to see if we can send the council and staff to the FEMA training that was a number of years ago and look for some outs, see if we can get the grant to do that again. Those were...
On that one, I would recommend you do it after I'm turned out.
Do it.
After I'm turned out.
Okay.
For whoever the new mayor is.
Ah, okay.
Because the mayor plays a very big role in the Maryland training.
Right, yes, I recall, right.
Yeah, and I would like to discuss the food tax again.
Okay.
Okay, but maybe before we go to the next one. So, the, these items were, that she just went through were to come back in study session. So, is that?
Yeah.
Is that sensible?
Oh, study session.
Yeah, those, that was what, that's, I was jumping in. So, those were, those various items that were brought up, say, the, the whole solid waste program, and the others would come back to the, to the council and study session coming forward. Okay, all right.
Okay. The next, the next item would be our follow-up items that were specific to, I apologize for budget items. I'm looking there.
It just keeps getting better, doesn't it?
Trying to find it. Can you, can you hit the screen?
Is the screen now out too? Oh, there we go, okay.
We can all go home and watch TV.
All right.
Can you get that off the screen so that this will work? All right, let's, let me get you here. So, these were the items that council had identified through the budget process as items you would like for consideration to be included in the fiscal year 14 budget. The first one was the tuition reimbursement program. There was a request to look to fund that, all things remaining the same at about a 50% tuition reimbursement for those who, for the same number of people, assuming the same number participate next year. That would be a $58,000 item. The live fire extinguisher program is a new request for $5,000. The supplies for the human services coordinator position, $6,095, and a request for an IT program review of $40,000 in order to review the projects and the, their, the operations of the IT department. So, those were four items that were brought up during the budget discussion to be added in. Mayor, if you'd like to go through those, if we can add those in, we are, we are recommending they be added in as one-time items for the fiscal year 14 budget.
Okay, where are we at with the budget rate at this moment?
We have about $70,000 of the 250-ish. We had 200,000 set aside for special events. You did about 180 there. We have about another 50,000 that we hadn't committed, so we have about 70,000 that is uncommitted at this time of one time.
Okay, so we got $70,000 to deal with this.
Yes, and we have, and the ongoing is balanced, yes.
I know one item we were going to bring back was that social services position, and that's not on here.
As a, to determine if you, we did, we did provide council with the description of the, of the position, and yes, we can add that to this as well, if you'd like to.
And I would like to also add, not at the same level, I talked about bringing our food, grocery food sales tax down from 1.8 to 1.6. I'd like to look at bringing it down from 1.8 to 1.75 with the idea that there's really nothing in this budget addressing the taxpayers. That would be a nominal amount. I estimate that would be, you know, 125,000 if revenues stay the same as they were last year from groceries, and they're probably gonna, you probably have a little bit higher projection, so it'd be less than that.
Thank you, Mayor. Carl, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Maybe I missed it somewhere, but where in the discussions was our rolling recreation center?
That was briefly touched on, I think, let me, Jeff, you're jumping up here, you can...
Right, if I may apologize. And that, that discussion we were anticipating talking about during the capital improvement program, when we had talked about the new Pioneer Park, and we had talked about different ways to support that area in the interim. Now, that was something we didn't delve as much into in the formal presentation. I apologize for that. The concept that was put forward was what type of recreational amenities can we provide in the north in anticipation of a community park coming into play? And in general, the, the recommendation from staff at this point is that we should look at all options, including, as, as Councilmember Edwards mentions, is maybe looking at the possibility of storefront properties and using that for recreational amenities. At this point in time, what we were seeking was to look at our parks, recreation, and open space master plan, which is seeking quite a bit of public input to see what the actual programming needs are, and also in the, in that period of time, try and seek out and have an estimated cost for if we were to look at refurbishing and retrofitting such a facility as this, and then coming back to council, probably at the time when we present the, the post, which is in November of this upcoming fiscal year. So, that was what we were anticipating. I apologize that we did not go into that.
Yeah, I have a real concern with that, because again, we, we have Park 3 coming on, proposed still, coming in, in 19, and we have no amenities north of, of the city. And everybody has to come down to Rio Vista, which is, it's not a long drive, but it's a drive. And so, we have, you know, we have an empty, a huge empty space that John Septon, with his graphs yesterday, showed that we have a gap of no amenities for, for customers, and that needs to be addressed. And I'm not happy that it wasn't put in here, even though we're doing a study. I don't think that it can, it can wait.
Right, appreciate that coming. We do apologize for not broaching that subject. It was intended. One item that we did want to identify was the, the concept of the ballfield lighting, which was put forward, was really to attempt to respond to some of those needs in those areas. We had heard very loudly from some of our citizens in the area that the need for youth and adult recreational opportunities and sports programs in those areas was of critical need, and we felt that with the amenities that we could put in place there, that that might be a better option for us. But I do apologize that we did not broach that.
So, you're saying the amenities in the ballpark, you thought was a better fit for the money versus recreational facility?
I should be clear. What, what I was saying is that if we invest in the ballfield lighting in those areas, that we would be able to undertake more recreational programming in those spots that seem to service what we believe is the need in that area, which is a real need for ballfield lighting.
So, let me ask you a question. During the, the summer months, how much recreational use is, is used in the ballpark?
Specific to the ballpark?
Well, you're saying that you, that you're spending another 100,000 or an additional $100,000 for the lighting, and you thought that there was better, the money was better served for the lighting versus, and, and I'm not, I'm not questioning it. Well, I am questioning it, is why are we spending money on lighting rather than amenities for our young and old inside? We, we talked about this many times, that we've identified some potential storefront properties that are sitting vacant, that are not being utilized. We don't have services up north that these, these people can partake in, and I thought that that was a good stopgap until Park 3 came online, and now we're saying that we're not going that way. I, I'm not happy.
Can I say it a little bit? Because we talked about this in, in the past before you came on council, and the restriction for, in terms of having more sports and other events up there was the lack of lighting. And there's a demand for more fields, right? You're, you're just packed. And if there was lighting there, those could occur in, in parks in, in the north. In fact, a few in the south, you're looking at more.
Well, with all due respects, and I understand that, you know, there's a need for it, but that doesn't address the summer months where those ballparks are probably not being used as much as...
No, they aren't.
You know, and so, so we spent all this money on the anticipation that the fields are going to be used longer, but they're probably not going to be used longer during June through September or August, maybe, because it's just too hot to go outside. And so now, we've, we've opened this amenity or this, this ballpark for the use, but nobody's going to use it because it's too hot. And so, now we're, we're getting everybody back down to Rio Vista. They're having to get in their cars, go to Rio Vista. Not to say that it's a great, you know, it's a great amenity down there, but it's too far south.
But if they're not going to the park anyway, they, they would if there were certain programs.
I'm not talking about the park. I'm talking about a storefront facility that offered indoor basketball, volleyball, some sport, or some weightlifting equipment, you know, a meeting place. What's that?
Aerobics.
Aerobics class, yes, thank you. You know, those are not, you're not going to do those in the, in the ballfield at 110 degrees.
That's true.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council...
Yeah, I know John's given this some thought, so, John.
Councilmember Edwards, I appreciate and certainly want to respond to your concerns with how it's reflected in, in this budget. As I mentioned in the special events, venue is everything. The storefronts, the ideas, all of these concepts are in the works, and the, the most important piece is that we're utilizing our post update, which is our master plan update, to do the, an extensive inventory, and inventory like has not been done before. So, looking at what we have, what others, private, commercial, EDIS has also been going through and analyzing the vacant storefronts in the different areas. So, while there isn't a specific line item for a specific area, it's because of the, the variability that we have. But I assure you that through our current budget with leisure classes, with even some of the special events opportunities, with the, the capacity that we have within the current budget, if something were to come with, with immediacy and the, and an opportunity and a partnership with somebody, that we would be able to shift some of those resources and make something happen. To the level of scale of programming that a Rio Vista is, absolutely not. But it's about that right piece. So, and again, with Jeff, I apologize if we haven't called that piece out, but I assure you that we're working on, first and foremost, the venue and the programming. We've got really at our fingertips. We've got a great team and a great amount of resources to be able to fulfill those needs. And when we recognize that the lighting of the ballfields, you know, we also, if we had 400 ball players, many of those are coming from north, from Vistancia and other areas. Well, when we have the opportunity with the right partner and the right venue, right location, we would see a shift in activity. We're not going to replace, we're not going to add to, we're not, certainly not going to double or expand so much. There'll be a small increase, because I think we'll increase more participation, but it really will be that shift to the north. So, we have recognized that, and I think that within our current, especially as fast as the fiscal years go, as those opportunities come aboard, we'll be able to respond accordingly.
And again, I appreciate the, the response, and I appreciate the, you know, the due diligence on it. Again, I'm just concerned that, you know, with Park 3 not coming online, proposed until, you know, 19, that is so many years away, and that area with all of the proposed development that's going on in there, those people are going to have no place to go. I mean, well, they'll have Rio Vista, but they're going to have to get in a car, they're going to have to get on the freeway. So, the, the kids or the adults that want to walk, bike, whatever, or dropped off, are not going to have that, those amenities to partake in. So, I, I'm going to stay focused on this and, and hold you to your task.
And I'll stay focused as well.
Thank you.
Don't worry, you won't be alone in that. But let, let me, let me just offer a way to kind of give you a sense of confidence and give the council a sense of confidence that we're on this. Maybe we can set up a study session time for the near future, Mayor, where we can come back and outline this in, in greater detail in terms of what it would cost to lease one of these spaces, the build-out, how we would shift programs from other parts of the city to those spaces to meet the, the need that Councilmember Edwards has called out. Is that, is that satisfactory?
Yes, yes, thank you.
We can bring it back for, for study session.
I have, are, are we doing storefront or indoor facilities anywhere in the summer? We got the schools. We do programs with the schools, right? But then probably not in the summer, huh?
It, actually, we do. We have a number of summer rec locations.
Indoors.
Where we do utilize the schools for the summer... the schools for the summer camp programs and the different activities. Um, but to the extent that, that Councilmember Edwards is talking about from a recreational programming for the entire family and others, so we, we do have a limited amount, I shouldn't say a limited, I mean, it's a pretty significant amount of summer programming that we utilize and partner with the school district.
Or they can go indoors for some events?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, meanwhile, back at the ranch, we got seventy thousand dollars, we've got probably a little bit more than that up here. We'll start with tuition reimbursement program fifty-eight.
I have a question, Mayor. The idea of, of a decrease to the food tax has been thrown on the table. How does that play with, with this?
What, any idea what that would, roughly what that would put on the budget?
I, I believe it would roughly be in the area of a hundred thousand dollars. Um, the, there are, certainly, we can, we can look at, you know, what that would mean, that's an ongoing, um, impact to the city's budget, so we'd have to look at items that are on our ongoing requests, or, or we would, you know, have to come back with some thoughts on that for you.
Okay, so, so right now, in, in this term, it'd be about a hundred thousand dollars, and we've only got seventy?
Yes, we have about seventy thousand dollars in one time, depending upon the items that you, um, identify, we could, you know, we, we will figure out what that would be, and there may be other areas we can look at.
Oh, this would go away, we'd need to cut another thirty.
Well, if, if you may, I mean, we're, you know, this, we're, we're down to thirty thousand dollars on a, what, five hundred plus million dollar budget. I, let us, if, if this is the list of, of activities that the council really wants to accomplish, let us go back and, and sort of scrub and see if we can come up with that thirty thousand, um, in, in terms of, of getting you what you need.
You, you misunderstand, it would be an additional one hundred thousand dollar cut to the budget, if, the food tax, if we.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes, of course.
But Tony's talked about dropping that one, so it.
What I'm saying is, uh, the food tax complicates things. If the food tax is considered, I'm okay with dropping the tuition.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
If we approve the reduction in the food tax, we're going to have to cut a hundred thousand dollars out of the budget. Yes or no?
Yeah, and, uh, I don't know, I've heard you can take a look at that, right?
Okay.
Even, even if, especially now that, that sixty thousand, fifty-eight thousand has come out.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was, I was confused, so, so.
I'm, I'm trying to reach a consensus.
All right, thank you.
Food tax, yes or no?
As I just proposed it, you mean, uh, one point seven five, yes.
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No.
Yes. Okay. Reduction of food tax, I guess this is, that's all going, we must move on.
Right? Do I have this right? We're going to forget all of these things, plus we're going to reduce our budget by another hundred thousand?
You can look at these others too, right?
Another thirty thousand. Okay.
Well, we have seventy, that's going to cost a hundred thousand dollars. Now, none of this applies anymore.
Right.
And you're still thirty short.
Mm-hmm.
Easy math.
Okay.
Well, that sort of puts an end to the discussions up here.
Uh, the only other item was the item of, um, the moving the one-time funding to ongoing funding for the youth delegates and the marketing materials. Again, count, staff would recommend keeping that at one-time funding, that's where we have it currently in the budget, um, and recognize that in the future, there might, if council gives us direction that, that in the future, there might be, we might try to look to get that funded as ongoing, if that's what the council's wishes would be.
Do you understand that?
Yeah.
Ma'am?
It's this one time versus.
So the human services coordinator position is also gone?
No, the human services coordinator position is, is included in the recommended budget, so that position would, would remain.
Right, it's the additional supplies.
The IT program review is gone, pull that out. Fire extinguisher program, gone. Right?
If, if that's.
The question before us now is, do we change the youth stuff to ongoing, or do we leave it for now for one time? That's the question.
Yeah, I, and our, our decision doesn't affect this year's, our next fiscal year fourteen budget, that money's there.
Yes, the money is currently, the money is currently budgeted as one time.
Automatically for fifteen.
Right, if, if staff would, if, if staff would recommend keeping it at one time for fiscal year fourteen, if the council has an interest in moving that to ongoing in the future, we would want to hear that so that we could plan for that in next year's budget, if that is, um, the preference of council.
Ongoing, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go, go ahead, I have.
Ongoing or, or one time?
Ongoing.
Ongoing.
One time.
Ongoing.
Okay, we will plan for that for the fifteen, fiscal year fifteen budget.
Okay. Anything else?
I just had one comment, uh, with the food tax, those items go away, but that doesn't mean those items can't be considered within the current budget, right?
Yes, if council, if those are priority items for council, and you would like that to be considered, we would, we would look for ways to consider that in the current fiscal year fourteen, or in the fiscal year fourteen budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Do, do they, you need direction from us to do that, or to consider those, uh, the live fire extinguisher supplies to human services coordinator and IT program review?
If, if those are items that you would like to.
You would look and see if you could do that.
We can look to see if we can do that, yes.
Okay, it was a pleasure with the council, you want them to try to fit this stuff, do you?
Sure, I, yeah, I.
But will we know what you're having to cut in order to do that?
Well, we'll have to come back and, and explain that, give us some time. I mean, I guess what we want to do today is get a, kind of a rap on the budget, um, so that we can do the necessary paperwork and, and processing to bring it to you under the adoption schedule. Um, if it's your direction to try to find this additional money within the budget, then we'll certainly do that and explain how, how we've done it, what our success has been in achieving that, um, but that, so we would bring it back to you as a follow-up.
Yeah, I, I added up all, all the supplementals, and they come to, after taking the off, uh, the offsets out to five million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars, so there's a lot in supplemental. And I would recommend that's, if you really had to take something out to make these happen, and, and you would tell us about that, I, I would look through the supplemental, but maybe you want to look elsewhere too, I don't know.
Yeah, we'll, if that's the direction of the council, we'll do that.
So it's clear, you're going to consider this along with the direction you've gotten today?
Correct.
You're going to come back and say, okay, if this, then that goes.
Mm-hmm.
You can have this one, but you can't have that one.
Yeah.
Or we save that, but you can't have this.
Right.
Yeah, as, as we bring the, the next, um, budget discussion, we have is the tentative budget, correct?
Yes, in fact.
So what, what we'll do is, when we, yeah, there we go. Um, so on May twenty-first, when we bring the tentative budget back to you, we'll address how we've responded to that question.
Is that all right, or should we try to schedule one more budget workshop before we get to the tentative budget? I, I think, I think if, if we don't.
It's not that much.
Well, it depends on whose office is getting gored, you know, you might, you might feel a little differently if you're losing something that you really like in the budget, and you're going to have to have time to have that discussion. I'm not sure during a council session, you want to sit here and be cutting up the baby. So why don't we schedule one more budget session to discuss how you're going to fit all the, the other dollars into the budget?
Okay.
So that, come tentative budget, adoption time, we're on the same page.
Could we do that, uh, we, we got a special meeting scheduled for this, for next Tuesday, could we work this in with that, you think?
I think you're asking, well, no, that's an executive session only, so no.
It's only executive session.
You can't do that in executive session.
The twenty-third?
Whatever, I mean, you guys pick a date.
Yeah, let us, let us, let us think about that, maybe I can talk with you, Mayor, and see, maybe it's something we can add to a study session as a, as a brief item. Let us, let us try to figure that out.
I would like to have that discussion before we get to the tentative budget.
Okay.
I don't want a long-winded discussion during the council session.
Okay.
Let's do that in a study session where we, it's a little looser and easier, and there's more give and take.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, we can plan for that.
All right with everybody?
Yes.
Our, but we were going to discuss that social services position, I believe, because we, we asked to.
That was the last piece on there.
Yes, so, um.
The social services.
The social services position is currently funded in the planning, community development department budget.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, I, I, you know, strongly support the, the work that we do for, um, developmentally disabled individuals and families and, and children and citizens and homeless, and, and we have the not-for-profit program, and we work through the HUD, C, CDGB, and, uh, we allocate funds to a lot of not-for-profits, and I think that's the way we've handled social, social service needs. And we have a staff that, uh, I, I feel has been doing an excellent job of bringing that to us. Uh, something that was brought up last time is that not enough people know about that. Well, in, independent of what we decide about this position, I do want us, there's a two-one-one number, Arizona was the last state in the whole nation to finally adopt that, and, and that's like nine-one-one, if you have some kind of an emergency, you know, the child is really sick, or you, you feel that your spouse is going into Alzheimer's or something, you can call two-one-one, and they will direct you to the, what, the services that you should contact. And as well, uh, Benavilla, who we pay money to do, to do this, to have people call them, and they can, they can hand, help them, or they can direct them to another service. We need to let our citizens know on our website and the literature that we send out, and I know just recently on my email blast, uh, it was brought to me that we're, we're sending something out about one of those services, so our citizens know about that. I think that's the most effective way to get the word out, if indeed there are people that don't, just don't know where to go, this is a way we can, uh, we can help them. Uh, we're spending money for this, we spend for two-one-one, we give some of our not-for-profit money toward that, not a big amount, but some, and, uh, we should utilize these to let our citizens know, because that was one of the reasons for, for this position. Uh, I feel that, um, you know, these things that this, uh, this person would do are already being handled by the current staff, I think they've, Corinne Emmig and Debbie Stone Mueller have been doing an excellent job, we work carefully with them, particularly those on the not-for-profit committee. And, uh, I don't really see the need for this position, but some others on, on the council do. Uh, I would like to see it maybe be, uh, brought in as a, um, outside entity for a year to see what kind of things could be done to enhance our, our program by having a, a, a direct person available, rather than going to a permanent staff at, at this time. And it might be less than the, um, is it about eighty thousand we looked at, we're looking at here, yeah?
About eighty-four thousand. Eighty.
Mr. Patena?
Well, I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Ames, but being a person who has spent most of his career in the human services area, I, I couldn't disagree with you more on this. Um, first of all, I, I believe if the city of Peoria is, is already behind the curve, you have cities like Phoenix, Mesa, Tempe, Chandler, Scottsdale, Avondale, Goodyear right now, and Surprise, are all looking for people like we're looking for, like I'm looking for it, uh, in this position. You mentioned that the staff does a great job. They do a wonderful job with, but they have limited resources, limited capacity. All of these positions have been titled human services, when you call any of these cities, some of them have multiple staff members. That's what they're doing, that they're coordinating those efforts between the city and those organizations for their citizens. We have, from nineteen sixty-four to, from nineteen forty-six to nineteen sixty-five, that's the baby boomer generation, they're all moving. Eighty-two percent of those people polled want to remain in their homes as opposed to going into a care facility. That means you're going to need services going to their homes because they're not going to be available in, they're not going to be living in the care facility. Who's going to provide those services and who's going to get those services to those people? Benavilla is a great resource, but they can't do it all. You have, um, in Peoria alone, you have Sun Air, you have Trilogy, you have, you have Westbrook Village, you have Ventana Lakes, these are all age-restricted communities that are getting older and starting to look for services, and I can tell you, they call the city for those services. We need a seat.
In addition, the group homes, like Freedom Plaza and those places.
Correct, we need, we need a seat at the table. When, when Peoria goes, when, when Peoria goes to events, the question is always, or the comment is always this, "Peoria, it's great to see you, where have you been?" We don't have anybody at these tables, we don't go to MAG meetings, we don't, we don't take a look at our, uh, trying to coordinate all the efforts with all of these not-for-profit organizations that we deal with. The not-for-profit committee only addresses just minimally what we can do and what we are doing for our citizens. There's just, when, when I look at this position, I look at much more than a person that's just going to be telling somebody where they can go. They're going to be doing the general fund grants, they're going to be establishing relationship with other human service agencies, which we clearly don't do right now. They're going to be a fair housing officer, which we don't really do right now. They're going to be working with the cap office, which is no longer existent in the city of Peoria. They're going to be working with the council subcommittee, um, and they're going to be a main point of contact for this city. I believe that this, this position is critical at this point. I believe, like I said before, we are already behind the curve, and I think it's time for Peoria to step up to the plate.
Mr. Edwards?
Uh, Mr. Patena, I couldn't agree with you more. Uh, I fully support this position. Um, just in one of the newspaper articles that you have on your, on your desk that I handed you this morning, uh, it highlights the, the importance of, you know, we have an elderly group that's now being tasked to take care of their grandchildren because the, the parents aren't around. And so here's one more task that these, these, these elderly people are having to do, and they need some guidance, they need some assistance. Um, Mr. Ames, you mentioned, um, email communications and websites. Unfortunately, a lot of our elderly people aren't comfortable with websites, they're not comfortable with emails, um, and I know this for a fact because in my recent campaigning, um, you know, most people don't have that. My own parents are not comfortable with, with the emails and websites, so we're leaving a large portion of the community, um, to, to use the, the two-one-one, and, and again, I think it's taxing, um, it, it's cumbersome, and we need, we need this resource.
Ms. Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Patena, I support you in your, in the idea of, of, uh, making, uh, human services our, our priority, and, uh, I'm standing shoulder-to-shoulder with you on that. The question here that I have, the concern that I have, is that, um, this is eighty thousand dollars, um, is this the best way to tackle or, uh, lead Peoria in the right direction? And that's something that, that I, my big question is, is this the best way to do it? I'm not opposed to human services, I, I live and I represent the oldest and probably the, the neediest district in the city, and that's the question that I'm going to continue to ask, is whether this position is the best way to tackle it. There is no disagreement on whether we need to improve our, our services in, in, in human services, and what's the best way to do it. And I look forward to having that conversation with you before we adopt the final budget.
Mayor?
Okay.
Thank you for your comments, Vice Mayor. I would tell you this, if I didn't feel that this was the best way to use these dollars, I would not have brought it forth.
Mr. Ames?
Um, yeah, I, I appreciate that too, and I, I do support, uh, serving the, the needy and the developmentally disabled, and I think that's part of our responsibility as, as citizens. And I think a large, large majority of my, of my citizens would, would agree with that, but it's kind of what, uh, Councilmember Rivera just mentioned, and, and I think, you know, we have this person here, but it's the not-for-profit entities that actually do serve these individuals, right? This person isn't going to directly serve these individuals.
No, no.
And, uh, would it be better if we put more money into that in our general fund, do you think?
Well, no, I, 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 I think, again, we go, we're, the, the misconception here is that this, that we're going to be supporting more not-for-profits. Actually, what I believe we're going to be supporting is, and I'm not sure of the title of that division anymore, but, uh, what is it? of that division anymore, but what is it?
It's planning.
Neighborhood coordination revitalization?
And it's under planning?
It's, it's, it's supporting that whole division in terms of being able, again, to have a seat at all these tables at MAG and having seminars and having workshops for, for the citizens, not just those who are getting up in age, but for those who might be getting ready for social security, for those who need Medicare or Medicaid information. Just a whole sundry of things that we, that we need to be doing. This goes way beyond just telling somebody, here's a social service agency you can go to. It's allowing the manager of that particular division to go out and, and meet with other cities and talk and see what they're doing and, and orchestrate a whole bunch of things that are going on right now with, with human services. So-
So you, you think of it, bring more services into play for our citizens, is what you're-
That's exactly what I'm looking for, yes. Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Two questions, and one is direct out of you, Councilmember Patena, in regards to human services, and I know you've worked for the city in that area. It's your view that this person is going to increase our customer service in the area of human services?
I believe it'll increase the interest in the services that we, as a city, currently provide through our not-for-profits to those citizens. It will increase their ability to better determine where they can go and where they can get services, other than, say, a 211 or calling a Benavia. They may call a Benavia and they provide, you know, hundreds of services, but not be, may not be that one that they need. Then they don't know where to go. And, and by the way, let me just, let me just add one thing about 211. I've called 211 just to double-check. It, it is not easy to get through that service. And I think, as Councilmember Edwards said, you, you have elderly peoples, first time they hear something where you have to go to a prompt, I'm sorry, but they're hanging up because they don't want to go through that.
Okay. And that was, I think you addressed my concern, that was my biggest issue of opening a position and having this person just go around meeting people and just increasing our staff presence versus having the goal of truly increasing our human services, customer service that we provide the city of Peoria.
That's exactly what I'm looking for.
Okay. Councilmember, I'm convinced, and I'll support you on that.
Thank you.
There are a lot of, not, there's not a lot. The city of Peoria currently does not participate through the human services system with MAG. We don't staff it. We have isolated ourselves. And that's what this position would do. Just as, as you go to TPC or you go to RPTA or you go to the council, regional council for MAG, and you participate on a region-wide issue, while they also do region-wide human services, issues that come up in classes, they do it and everything else. We miss out on all that. We don't have this position.
We don't have any staff attending?
No. Who are you going to send? We don't have anybody. We don't have that position. So far, we don't have that position filled. And it's not the job of Debbie or Karen or anybody else to be, be attending these kinds of meetings. So, yeah, I mean, we're isolated. And it's time we joined the rest of the valley in terms of providing human services. So I'm, I'm with you. I support this completely. Questions or comments? Keep it or lose it?
Uh, keep it.
Keep it. Keep it. Keep it. Why not? It's a formal.
We want to increase our presence of the town.
Was there anything else?
That's it. We really appreciate your time. Yeah, we're, we have direction, or 99.99% direction. We'll bring that, that final item back. I'll talk with you, Mayor, and we'll bring it back on a study session. So thank you all for your time, your work, your hard effort in looking through the document, coming prepared, spending all this time. We really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, where's, there's lunch in back. Grab your box, go home with it, or whatever you do.